This is January 28th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Dickinson City Council. We're going to call this meeting to order at 7:03. Roll call.
Mayor Julie Masters.
Here.
Councilmember Charles Suderman.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Henderson.
Here, sir.
Councilmember Walter Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Wally Deeds.
Here.
Councilmember Louis Decker.
Here.
Councilmember William King.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. If you'll please rise for the invitation led by Pastor Lewis Little from Mount Carmel, followed by the pledge by Councilman Deeds and the voting flags.
Sure, Lord, again. Father, I thank you for bringing us through 2018, and I thank you for keeping it prepared for 2019. I pray now, O God, that you continue to touch our hearts, crown our heads with wisdom. Whether we need any strength, give it; we need courage, supply it. And if you don't mind, I stand in the gap for those that have lost their loved ones that are grieving at this hour. I pray that this city continue to show us love. Use it, O God, and let it be a light, a light that will shine. Dickinson, O God, is on the move because you're blessing us, and I thank you for all these blessings. Now, all these things that we say and all these things that we do, I pray that it's done decently and in order, and always pleasing in your sight. A solemn prayer I render unto you this day in Jesus' name is the only way I will to prove it. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge of the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the flag.
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, long and invisible.
Pastor, thank you, Councilmember Deeds. We have no pro forma motions this evening, so we'll look at item five, which is announcements and presentations, and we'll go with council comments, and we'll start with Councilman Wilson.
Well, first off, I'd like to welcome everybody here for the first meeting of the new year. It seems like quite a few faces here, so I could see some items on the agenda that has captured somebody's attention. Like I said, I welcome everybody. That's really all I have to say.
Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. As you said, this is the first meeting of the 2019. I hope it's all good. I hope you guys are happy to be here. We are. 2019, we've got a lot of work ahead of us. We're going to keep working at it. The only thing I really have to say is I want to say congratulations and good luck to two of our officers at the PD, Steve Cronin and Jim Johnson. Apparently, I might be the last person that knew, but both these gentlemen who have been in the city for a really long time are both going to retire on the 24th of January. Two fantastic officers. It's truly a lost our city. They will be missed. That's about all I have, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming, though.
Thank you. Councilman Suderman.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome to everyone that's here. I too want to express my appreciation to Captain Cronin and Sergeant Johnson for all their years of public service. They really helped put this police department on the map. Little update on the festival of lights. If you came, we appreciate it. If you didn't, you don't know what you missed. This year was a lot different for us. We had to change everything that we did out there, and we still had over 38,000 people that showed up in 30 days. We were a little bit concerned that having everything on one side was going to force us to limit access to the park, but we never got to that point. We got close one night, but everything went great, and we thank you for your help. If you still would like to volunteer every Saturday and Sunday in July, in January, we appreciate the help because all that stuff's got to be taken down, moved over to our lot and stored. So if you'd like to come out and help, we'll take you for all day. We'll take you for 30 minutes, so whatever you'd like to do. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you. And since I see some students in the room, I just want to mention that Trash Bash is going to be March 30th, and I hope to see all you out there and many, many more of your friends. March 30th, Highway 3, Oak Ramp. Please come out and help us. Councilman Deeds.
Thanks, ma'am. I'd like to welcome everyone also. Hope you had a happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. We're looking forward to a busy year this year. Correct me if I'm wrong on these dates, but the de-silting of six miles of ditches in the city is scheduled, the contractor scheduled to start Monday, 14th, and the de-snagging of the bio contract is scheduled to start Monday also on the 14th, and that'll be from Cemetery Road to the Railroad Bridge. So we're looking forward to those two projects getting started and even more so to completion of them. I only have one other thing. I'd like to see, I'd like to ask the mayor if she would include an agenda item for a city administrator's report on our council meetings.
Absolutely. We'll see you on the 22nd.
Thank you. That's all I have, ma'am. Thanks.
Councilman Decker.
Good evening. Thanks to y'all. I appreciate when citizens show up at this council, either asking questions or telling us about a problem. It's very appreciated to me. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Councilman King.
Mayor, thank you. Council, city administrator, city attorney, good to see you. Lauren, it's been a while since we've had a chance to have your presence on the diocese. So, city secretary to all of our citizens, we're here tonight. Happy New Year. Everyone had a fantastic Christmas and holiday period before New Year's. It certainly was a great time. I didn't hear as many fireworks as I did on last year's. Maybe things are getting better as far as fireworks are concerned.
War.
Maybe they were all at Wally's house. I didn't hear as many fireworks. Though I do have a few things. The Bay Area Houston Economic Partnership Quasar banquet is coming up on January 25th. I know our council is supporting that. Good. And hopefully, all of our council members can be present. They have a great entity doing great and fabulous things for corporate companies and businesses, entities, on behalf of NASA and on behalf of the economic development of the Bay Area. We certainly appreciate that particular group and what they are doing in that particular effort. Also, I have an announcement about the Family Service Center is having a Flashback Friday on February 1st, 2019, the Tremont House and Ballroom in the Davidson Building, and they're asking for fundraising support for the Family Service Center. Dickerson is having a, should I say, a Galveston County Homeowners Assistance Program Application Fair. As you probably have maintained awareness, that funding is available for the GLO, the Homeowners Assistance Program. Now, should we have applications out front?
Not applications, just flyers.
Flyers out front. If you're a homeowner, Dickerson, your home is damaged, you need assistance, we're getting your home repaired, placed back in livable conditions, fundings are available. I think it's about $50,000 ceiling per home on those who qualify and meet the criteria. And so there's an application process. We've had the Dickerson Railroad Depot as a location on Tuesdays and Thursdays all day. So if you are free in the morning, you can get there as early, I think it says 8:30 to 9 o'clock, and then as late as 5 o'clock in the evening, they are receiving applications through the GLO for residents in Galveston County. So we encourage you to do that. The mayor and the city administrator apparently has gotten together and having an application workshop or fair where you can, they'll have people on hand, on site, citizens fill out the application. It's going to be January 11th, January 11th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. So Dickerson will host this application fair. Individuals affected by the hurricane may qualify for assistance through the Texas Homeowners Assistance Program. Those who owned their home and it was damaged and destroyed through Hurricane Harvey. The Galveston County Long-Term Recovery is still taking application or working case files. They're located in Texas City. We also have the opportunity for the rent holders to still provide assistance. We're trying to get the word out to as many people as possible so no one is left behind. We're still working with the Jona and the GLO concerning the reimbursement component of the Harvey recovery effort, and that is to reimburse citizens who had to dip into their savings on their retirement account in order to get their home to livable conditions. Well, the GLO Hurricane Harvey Recovery Program with qualified receipts that shows that the money came from your personal account and receipts indicating you spent on your home, then you can get up to $50,000 in reimbursement in our own house. And so we appreciate all the help that is taking place, and I think it's a great idea to have a workshop. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate on what he was talking about, the Housing Assistance Fair is this Friday. You're sitting all from 4 to 11. You need, there's several things you need to bring with you. You can also apply online, but there are several things, so make sure you look at the flyer so you can bring all the information that you need so that they can move that application process forward. It is a first come, first served. It's open to all of Galveston County. We're some of the hardest hit, we're some of the, we've got probably more people that still need to rebuild, so we want to make sure every citizen in Dickinson has that opportunity to get some help and get their homes rebuilt. So first come, first served. So if you have neighbors, friends, family members that you know, help spread the word, and let's get our neighbors in here and get them some help so they can get their homes back together. Yes?
I think you made, I mean, if earlier you said 4 to 11, I think it's 4 to 7.
Or 7, sorry.
And I do want to also offer my condolences to the Truett Mark family, whose funeral was this past Monday at the Mount Olive Baptist Church. Great asset in the city, Dickerson's son is a great asset, worked for Ziegler's for many years in the community, ballgames at the school, and so I can go assist to his children and survivors.
Thank you. Item six is an update on the Public Works projects. Is someone here to give that report? Nope. No, we have nothing. Item seven is public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the council. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the council may not deliver aid. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes per individual speaker, and our only speaker is Teresa Anley. And you know the routine, Teresa Anley.
Teresa Anley, address 4811, 32nd Street, in Nicholson. After reviewing Brian's report, that's why I'm here, nobody has been in Nicholson since October. Our roads are impassable. We have been begging and begging for many years for help, we're not getting it. We get empty promises and nothing's being done. We've been promised engineers would start actually doing my road. We don't even see a truck go down. On behalf of Nicholson, fireworks, there were gunshots, all, for two days straight in Nicholson. Houses were being hit, so...
Not really with gunshots.
With bullets, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Dickinson PD law validated.
The place was clean?
Yeah. Well, to the gunshots, but there was only so many officers then. That entire part of Dickinson was being lit up. We were doing a free show for the county out there. So anyway, city ordinances are not being taken seriously over there, so...
Well, they were in my neighborhood, I think it was fireworks, not gunfire.
There was a lot of, you could...
Imagine.
Yeah. So anyway, and I think Dickinson PD, they were doing the best they could, but if there's going to be a fireworks and city ordinance versus a car accident, I hope they're at the car accident, you know, so anyway, but we really need no more talk and no more empty promises. We need stuff being done.
We're with you. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. Item seven, I don't know if this is exactly where it should be, but is there any point this evening we're going to get an update on the status of the fire department? Is that part of the Public Works, or is there another line item that would be under?
There isn't. City administrator could probably say something under the council comment.
Do you have any updates? Sorry, take that out of order.
Yes. So the contractor finished the roof last week, and then Mackey Mechanical started on the HVAC work that seems to be causing all of the mold. They tracked out mold into the HVAC system, removed all of that. They have temporary units inside now, so the paramedics are actually working inside the building now because they've gotten rid of the extent of the mold that they could see. It will be retested, and Mackey should be finished by the end of the week. Our new facilities manager is going to evaluate the systems once they're all backed up. He thinks one will definitely probably need to be replaced, but one may still be able to continue working, but he won't know until they're all up and running and he can see them all working functionally. So that's, I have electricals done as well as the lady.
How's this affecting the budget across the board?
The budget for...
Not our budget, but the budget for that project.
So the budget for that project, the HVAC was not included in what Horizon had did, so this is on top of that. And we only limited it to the units that absolutely had to be done in order for the locker room to be up and running again. And so that's why our new facility manager is going to evaluate the other units and get more quotes because at the time, to get a quick resolution and a quick fix, we had Mackey do it.
Do you have a report when BMS provided to us after the inspection?
So BMS didn't do an actual report, is my understanding. They came out and met, but I don't know if Derek got an actual report. But I don't believe they got an actual report. They did a walkthrough, but nothing was hired or acquired at this time because it seems to be only HVAC, which since the ducts have been removed from that area.
So how far onto the hook are we beyond what we originally agreed to? How many feet to the fire, give me ballpark?
15,000?
15,000?
15,000, I think.
Okay.
I don't remember the exact numbers from Mackey's, the units that are on there.
Were there five-ton units out there?
One was a five-ton, the other I think was a three-ton.
Let's limit our questions because this is not on the agenda. So we got enough information?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Stephen. Item seven is public comments. I read that already, right? You did that. We want a consent, okay. Item eight is consent agenda. All items are considered routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion on these items unless the council number requests, in which event the item will be removed, consent agenda, and discussed after.
Would you approve?
Motion to approve by Councilman Wilson, second by Councilman Deeds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Item nine, consideration possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding for the Texas Community Development Block grant funds between the city of Dickinson and Galveston County Water Control Improvement District Number One, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Move.
Motion by Councilman King to approve, second by Councilman Wilson. Discussion?
Yes. On this here, can you just simply confirm that while we're doing this as a joint venture, so to speak, there is no cost associated to the city?
Hundred percent pass, sir.
We, in fact, we have to apply for WCID, and can't apply for these ones themselves.
So to make sure there was no engineering, no...
No, this is all, they're new.
Same.
I would also like to add that what is going to be different in this versus the ones prior is we've actually, the agreement requires that they give us their match up front so that we have that as cash flow for their reimbursements, so that we're working off of that the whole time as well.
It seems like, since we're in a legislative session, that is there any word by their contact that our representative, Valman, could get that law changed where they can do it on the horizon? It seems like this would be a good opportunity to try to get something through the state legislature.
Not to my knowledge. I don't think they're seeing interest in that, are they?
Well, I have an interest in it. I don't know if just as the council members have an interest in it, but I'd like to see the city, you know, out of their business.
Well, these CDBG funds, other cities, other COGS allow these funds to, like, some do these funds to help build hospitals, some do other projects with them, but in our COG, the board that's over this is adamant that it's only spent, these funds are only to be used on water. I tried to change that. I was the lone vote, so...
Well, okay, I'm not, I'm not what you just talked about.
Well, if we, if we take this away...
My question is, why can't the water board apply for this on their own and manage it on their own?
Because there's no dealable board, and the money comes, the money comes through the cities. The cities do this on their own for them when they have their own water departments. So they did, they had it done was to allow this to be individual water districts.
Okay, so my question is, is it state law or is it HVAC?
I think it's either, I think it's state law.
I think it's state.
Pretty sure it's state. So that's my point, is that it would be in an effort for efficiency that if we're in an agreement, we ought to recommend to the water board that they, you know, seek some relief with the legislation.
Well, what this is, is, we understand this is another funding mechanism that's available only at certain times during disasters. They're waiting to go through cities to water, do these water boards so that these improvements can be made, or if they're not funded, be able to be funded this way, then the water districts that are sitting out there, if they weren't part of the city, then they would have to do bonding or just not do the projects. This is just another funding mechanism that just happens to be out there that's available because not all, but most of WCID Number One is within the confines of the city of Dickinson.
I'm in total agreement with you, other than that, you know, they ought to be able to do it on their own, not have the city do it. And if that's a simple change to state law, then I'm for it.
Okay, noted. We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 10, consideration possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, awarding Texas Community Development Grant Phase Two Solicitation for Administrative Services to Public Management Incorporated, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an improvement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Would you approve?
Motion for Councilman Henderson to approve, second by Councilman Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 11, consideration possible action concerning a resolution of the city council of the city of Dickinson, Texas, awarding requests for qualifications for engineering and architectural surveying services for the Texas Community Development Grant Program to HDR, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate an agreement for such services, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Would you approve?
Motion by Councilman Henderson to approve, second by Councilman Decker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 12, consideration possible action concerning zoning cases EMC-18-1926, an ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, amending the conference of zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 420-2001, is heretofore amended, so as to result in approximately .423 acres, legally described as abstract 19, Perry and Austin survey, part of Lot 140, 1-1, Dickinson Edition D, generally located north of East FM 517 and west of Birch Street in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, from general commercial to conventional residential, directing a change accordingly in the officials on the map in future maintenance after the city, providing a penalty amount of amount not exceeding $2,000 for each day of violation hereof, and providing a repeal clause, a savings clause, severability clause, and an effective date.
Rule 22.
Motion to approve by Councilman King in two readings, second by Councilman Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 13, consideration possible action concerning the ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, deleting section 12-176, cost of abatement of the violation of, of the violation of Chapter 12 offenses miscellaneous of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dickinson, Texas, adopting a new section 12-176, cost of abatement of the violation of Chapter 12 offenses miscellaneous of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Dickinson, Texas, providing for the incorporation of preamble and providing an effective date.
Would you approve it, too?
Motion by Councilman Deeds to approve it, too. Second by Councilman Decker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item 14 is a public hearing concerning SUP-18-2038, a request for a specific use permit for a bar located at 1,001, FM 646, Dickinson, Texas, 77539. Currently zoned general commercial. We will open the public hearing at 7:28.
Mayor and council, tonight, this particular item for you is, we got approached, staff got approached by a couple wanting to open what they're calling Penny's Beer Garden. They're looking to have a small urban farm on the property and also sell local craft beer and wine out of one of the facilities or the buildings there on site. Based on that aspect of it, is requiring, based on our ordinances, it kind of pushes it into that bar standpoint, even though that's not fully defining what they're wanting to do, but that's where it pushes it per our ordinance. So that's why it is before you this evening. Of course, at the December meeting of the PNC Zoning Commission, they, the PNC did recommend, unanimously recommended approval of the item. In the packet for you that was included of the PNC item, it kind of shows you generally what they're looking to do, shows you where the farm is located, are, really, they're trying to create a family-friendly atmosphere, and so having, you know, children's area at the bar portion of it, they communicated, and though the applicants are here obviously this evening, they can kind of go into more detail, but they are looking to operate really on the weekends, have market days on the weekends, people to come buy, you know, a product that they obviously have grown there, and they'll be tending to the farm, you know, during the week, so they won't really have operation during the week where people can stop by, so it will be primarily a weekend occurrence at this point. So that's all I have. Let the applicants kind of give you more information.
Yeah. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Crystal White. I come from Bayside, come with a 402 workforce from the city of Dickinson. Basically, we are wanting to start a business in Dickinson, a business serves the community that can help develop to our customers with onsite urban farm producing potatoes, fruits, and vegetables. We support local businesses by providing a farm with a small taproom where we'll offer local beers and wines on tap. But unlike traditional bars, our hours are only going to be till noon p.m. Friday and Saturday, and a little bit earlier on Sundays. We're going to have a really jamming environment to dispatch, so we want to have that place get prepared, indoor, outdoor seating, so we can just have them gather, maybe some games, you know, lay out from the lawn, look at the garden, and just kind of enjoy the area. The property right now is kind of semi-makin. It doesn't have any sales revenue for the city of Dickinson. So with our business, we're hoping to add some tax revenue for the city and then just make it so that people want to come to Dickinson for the unique experience. Finally, we want to share our passion for the environment and the community by investing out into areas such as animal adoptions, community gardens, and rental workshops, among other things that we've brought out.
Do you want to add anything? Is there, okay, y'all can sit down for a second. I see several people have signed up, so I'll call you in this order if you've signed up to speak on this item, plus to speak in favor if you've signed up. And then I can just mark y'all's. State your name and address, please.
My name is Marcy Currie. I'm at 9209 Jamaica Beach in Galveston. Thank you for your time considering my friend's business. As a consumer, I look for these types of places. Small businesses are obviously very important to our economy, and locally sourced produce isn't easy to come by, so even if you're buying it at the big grocery stores, you don't necessarily know that it was really that local. I think that's something that's going to be more in demand in our future. So Crystal was one of my coworkers in the past, and I can assure you, she will put everything into this business. She doesn't do anything with less than 100%. Her desire to serve the community and educate are definitely a gift, and I don't even think we can discuss all the possibilities and potential that she has for something like this. I don't know what type of person wouldn't want to... Uh, I don't know what type of person wouldn't want to, but, wouldn't want to visit this. Garden, animals, beverages, that's not the main point. Obviously, she's closing it at nine, it's not going to be some party place. Um, but she's been working really hard and on this for a long time, and she has so many ideas for the workshops, like she mentioned, and activities that are really going to be good for the earth and your community. So I'm also a council member, I'm usually on that side, so that's why I'm nervous, I'm sorry. Um, I'd be absolutely thrilled if someone encouraged our council with something like this. We have zero land space in Jamaica Beach or something like that, but, um, I would be very in favor of something going to a farm, as opposed to paving and putting up a big chain store. So I hope you guys are all in favor and open to, uh, this type of new age atmosphere, and with a doubt would be, without a doubt, would be successful and definitely benefit to Dickinson.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Hi, my name is Matthew Lemers, I live at eight oh six Clark Drive, Pasadena, Texas. Uh, I would also like to go on public record and say I am nervous about speaking with the city council.
We are too.
Having known and worked with the proposers of item fourteen for many, many years, I can honestly say that they are among the most professional and community-minded individuals I have ever known. Uh, Penny's Beer Garden and Urban Farm will provide a safe, family-oriented, neighborhood business. Farmer's Market area will provide a valuable resource to local gardeners and animal handlers to sell their wares, and the taproom area will serve as a small-scale forum for strictly local artisan craft brews, and closes doors at nine p m. nightly. Uh, conclusion, Penny's Beer Garden will prove to be an indispensable community asset.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Heather Samper, I'm at twenty four twenty two Redfish Drive, Texas City. I am a female minority business owner here in Galveston County, and hopefully soon, Crystal will also be a female minority business owner in Galveston County with the council's approval. She's taken an interesting idea and is bringing Penny's Beer Garden to fruition. I believe Penny's Beer Garden will provide many unique opportunities for not only Dickinson, but the surrounding communities in Galveston County. Aside from providing fresh fruits and vegetables for the community to purchase, Penny's Beer Garden will be able to educate and enhance the lives of the community's youth. F F A chapters from local high schools will be able to have a place to practice what they're learning. This can also be an establishment where young entrepreneurs can excel and practice their skills at Galveston County's annual lemonade day. Homeschoolers now have another option to meet and learn about the importance of gardening and nature. And finally, master gardeners will also have another location to hone their skills, teach others, and help make this garden very bountiful for the community. These are just a few examples of the benefits this business will bring to the city of Dickinson, and I wholeheartedly support Crystal, and I hope this council does as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sasha Francis, I live at forty seven oh eight Avenue King House, and, um, I have actually worked at the Galveston Brewery for the last three and a half years, and I have to say that in order, uh, a place such as that, even though it may be, oh, it's just another, you know, place for beer, it actually provides an amazing opportunity for the community, and is also a family-friendly establishment, so I can attest to, um, the fact that it has brought really amazing revenue to the area, and also people seeking out specifically a place like that can bring all sorts of great people into Dickinson, um, and we have the, we've had the best customers, honestly. Um, so having a space like that that provides, um, a place for community, a place for fundraisers, for, like they said, um, local organizations for adopting pets and, and wildlife conservation and education space for people interested in that, um, would be a huge benefit to the city, I'm sure. And I will be teaching community yoga there as well, if it's approved, um, and local musicians, I mean, local musician as well, so just providing a really amazing space for all these awesome talented people, I'm sure you guys out in your city, um, as well as in Galveston County. So, um, I look forward to bringing out a Penny's Beer Garden in the future. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Michael San Marco, I live at forty eight sixty Palomar Lane, Lake City, Texas. Uh, really, what I want to talk about was Crystal and Deed specifically. Uh, I, I've known him for a long time. There are some, two people I know, if I had a problem, or my wife had a problem, we could call up and they'd help us. Um, I'm actually an engineer, and what I really support about them running your business is they are not corner cutters. They do everything very thoroughly, um, they're trustworthy, and those are the exact people who I want to run your business about attending it. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. It's not even open, we have all these people coming into Dickinson already. Anyone here to speak opposed? Applicant, you want to add anything? We're gonna adjourn the public hearing at seven thirty eight. Item fifteen, consideration possible action concerning zoning case S U P dash eighteen dash twenty thirty eight, ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number four two zero dash two thousand and one, is heretofore amended to grant specific use permit number S U P dash one eight dash two zero three eight, allowing applicant to use property for a bar. Such property being legally described as two point zero eight acres in abstract one M Austin survey, southwest P T of lot one thirty, one thirty dash one, Thaiman's first subdivision, abstract one M Austin survey, part of lot one thirty, one thirty dash four, Thaiman's first subdivision, more commonly known as one thousand one, F N six forty six, generally located north of Second Street and east of F N five, F N six forty six, in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, presently zoned general commercial, provided for the incorporation of preamble, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty of amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day of violation hereof, and providing a repeal clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, and an effective date.
Be approved.
Motion by councilman Deeds to approve. Second by councilman Henderson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wish, uh, this is one of those projects, I wish we could approve it in one reading. Yeah, this is, uh, welcome to Dickinson, glad to have you.
We have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We got to give it, at least one through one more reading, so. Item sixteen is a public hearing concerning S U P dash one eight dash two one one two, a request for a specific use permit for a bar located at property legally described as abstract nineteen, Perry and Austin tract sixty seven sixty seven dash five, one point eight five five acres, Dickinson, Texas, seven seven five three nine, currently zoned general commercial. We're gonna open this public hearing at seven forty.
Mayor and council, uh, this particular application, um, we've been dealing with, uh, these two gentlemen that, uh, are going to open, uh, Flying Rhino Brewing Company, uh, in the city. Um, they're, they're looking to open a micro brewery to do, uh, operations, as well as have, uh, a taproom, uh, associated with that, um, right in front of the Pinewood subdivision, uh, is kind of the property they've kind of homed in on. We've been dealing with them for a while, trying to get, uh, things squared away, they've been dealing with the water district to make sure, uh, for their operation purposes, that they can actually do what they want to do over there. So, um, they're excited to, to be coming here, they're local guys, uh, and they, they want to be in Dickinson and, and, you know, kind of spread their business here, uh, in Dickinson. So, of course, at the, um, uh, P and Z meeting as well, uh, it was also, uh, recommended approval, uh, by the planning and zoning commission, uh, back in December. So, uh, obviously, the, uh, applicants are here to speak as well, and they give you more information on the, uh, business.
And applicants, go forward. And I'll need your names and addresses.
Uh, I'm Ryan De La Rosa, uh, address is two zero one zero Gray Falls Drive. Matthew Emmett, address is sixteen twenty seven Twenty Fifth Street, San Antonio, Texas. Hi, guys. Uh, so we're Flying Rhino Brewing Company, uh, we're looking to open a micro brewery, uh, like you said, in front of the Pinewood, uh, subdivision, bought the property there back in April, uh, it's about, just a little bit less than two acres. Uh, we're looking to build a facility there that will be not only production for beer, but also a taproom. Uh, we grew up here, our family still live here, we wanted to come back, when we finally had this idea to do this, we decided this would be the best place for it. Um, we know lots of people here, and, uh, we know lots of people that are excited about it. Um, we want it to be like a family, for, you know, much like they were describing, a family-friendly environment, uh, where people can come out and, and, uh, just kind of share community together there. Um, the taproom, we're looking to make it about, uh, two thousand square foot with a eight thousand square foot, uh, production facility. Um, that'll allow us enough room and a brewing, uh, brewing system large enough to not only sell through our taproom, but also to distribute to local restaurants and bars and that kind of thing. And, uh, we'd like to be able to bring in food trucks, um, to sell food on the premises, uh, maybe also work out deals with some of the local restaurants and whatnot to deliver, uh, because we won't have a kitchen of our own, so we're perfectly open to people bringing food, people picking up food and bringing it. Um, and eventually, we would plan to, uh, sell beer to go, um, as far as you can come in, get a crowler, get a growler, once we start canning, you know, we hope to have, like, coolers, and people can come in, get a six-pack, take it home with them. Um, yeah, that's, uh, that's really about it. Anything else?
Okay. Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak opposed?
I'm not necessarily opposed, I'm just like, I don't know.
You have to, uh, state your name and address.
My name is Todd Hathaway, uh, ten sixty two Brigham Court, Dickinson, Texas, I'm the, uh, a member of the board of directors of, what do they call them? Uh, all I'd like to say is that it sounds like a cool place, I'm not necessarily personally opposed to it, it's just with everything, with development in, in, um, city councils and city municipalities, it just seems like it's, you know, kind of robs you down the new through. Uh, we've got homeowners there that have lived there for, you know, many years, they invested their lives into this, uh, area, and they invested into the, uh, into the property. They want their property values to continue to rise, and this may, may happen, I don't know, but just, there's some points that I'd like to, to say, that, you know, noise, uh, light and utter pollution, keep that thing needs to be mitigated, especially for the homeowners that butt up against that, that property. So I really hope that the council puts some effort into evaluating that, make sure that's a part of their business plan. Uh, and, uh, I'm gonna throw this out there, because it's on everyone's mind, drainage, um, you know, we had some issues there, and, uh, you know, my house took a foot of water in it, so, uh, you know, that needs to be part of the plan. If that isn't addressed, and that, that's not solved, it doesn't even move forward. I'm just, I'm sorry, we need to solve the problems first, then move forward. Uh, and then, um, there's one on all traffic, uh, you know, that needs to be accounted for. We have a little bit of difficulty getting in and out as it is now, because we butt up the big city, and it's difficult getting traffic lights put in, that's what we're being told anyways. Uh, so that needs to be part of the business plan. And, you know, these things need to be solved before we, we have the issue, but otherwise, you know, I can't speak against it, it sounds like a cool place, I could walk to, out of here, so. So, uh, but other than that, that's, that's what I'd say.
Great, great points.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any rebuttal?
Uh, so, as far as noise and whatnot, I mean, obviously, the city has noise ordinances, but I know that sometimes that might not be enough for, for some people. Um, you know, we don't plan to be open super late, when it comes to music, we can always shut it down a little bit earlier, like, I think, right now, we're planning probably ten o'clock as our closing time during the week, um, and early on, maybe that on the weekends, the latest we could ever be open is midnight, and even then, that would only be on Friday and Saturday. Um, and, like I said, as far as music, any kind of noise like that, we can shut it down. That's why we do have a fairly large indoor taproom, uh, to hopefully keep people, and the, and it's also going to be located at the front of the property. It's not going to be, the production facility will be towards the back, and that's the larger part of the building, so it'll keep people away from the fence line, and most of the noise away from the fence line, that's kind of how we've planned it. Um, as far as traffic, uh, we have looked into that a bit, uh, I'm actually a civil engineer, so, uh, have some experience with it, and we know, uh, you know, right now, we, just based on the size and use of the building, we're going to produce less than fifty additional peak hour vehicles, uh, per day. So, most cities look at a hundred as a threshold before they start thinking about traffic settings or anything like that, so we, less than half of that. Um, so we have looked into that. Um, and I guess it's fine with the other, uh, noise.
How about the, the broad up smell as well?
Smell, I mean, I don't know that that's a huge issue, um, especially at the size we're going to be doing, and any of our brewing would be probably done during the day when no one's home anyway, and it, like I said, at the size we're doing, you know, it's not going to be constant brewing twenty-four seven, it's going to be, it's a start once a week, it might eventually go to seven days, but even then, you know, it, I, I don't think the smell is going to be an issue. And then drainage, well, I mean, again, that's things that are going to be in the design plans, um, you know, those are things our architect will look at when we get to that point. Uh, we're not allowed to drain off any faster than the natural ground is there anyway, if we have to do some kind of detention, whether it be in our parking lot or through a drainage system, I mean, we have to do that, there's, that's the rules, those are the laws, so can't really, can't really do anything about that, uh, we have to, we have to comply with that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna adjourn the public hearing at seven forty eight. Item seventeen, consideration possible action concerning zoning case S U P dash eighteen dash two one one two, an ordinance of the city of Dickinson, Texas, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number four two zero dash two thousand and one, is heretofore amended to grant specific use permit number S U P dash one eight dash two one one two, allowing the applicant to use the property for a bar. Such property being legally described as one point eight five five acres in abstract nineteen, Perry and Austin tract sixty seven, sixty seven dash five, generally located south of F N five seventeen and west of Pinewood Bay Drive in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, presently zoned general commercial, provided for the incorporation preamble, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty of amount not to exceed two thousand dollars for each day of violation hereof, and providing a repeal clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, and an effective date.
Be approved.
Motion by councilman Deeds to approve. Second by councilman Decker. Discussion?
Yes.
Councilor Henderson?
I'm assuming, I haven't, uh, have not been out there properly, I know where it's located. The, uh, a few years ago, we passed an ordinance that does not allow you to take a, all the heavy vegetation off the backsides of a piece of property that's being developed. I don't know if that exists there, but for some of the people that are concerned about noise and things, this is one of the ideas of that ordinance when we passed it, that you would no longer be allowed to distribute, uh, property all the way back to the property line. The other suggestion I would have on something like that is in your landscaping plan, if nothing else, uh, maybe consider some fast-growing trees or something back where your neighbors would be, that would help shelter light, noise, smells, and everything else. And the only other concern I could, I can actually say, which I'm, since you are an engineer, I'm pretty sure you're going to address this, is that your location there will be probably impacted pretty heavily by the Y N of five seventeen. You may be old and gray by the time they get to do it, I don't know that, you know, you've been promising for a while.
It's scheduled for twenty twenty-three.
I understand, it's, it's scheduled before that, too, so, my point being is, is that, uh, you want to make sure that you locate that property to, I mean, you're building it off to where you're not going to be having a big problem with that, you know, people have to be able to have a way to get in and out of there without collisions, but, you know, those are the only, those are the only concerns I really have.
Mayor, I like that, huh?
Councilman Henderson?
Um, I had the pleasure of being at the planning and zoning meeting when you guys presented the first time, and I'd like to let the council know that Mr. Emmett is a veteran, had the good sense to join the United States Army. And I give a few points of me.
Who wrong? Is this the right one?
No, it's, no, it's all correct.
Sorry. Okay, the smell, because I, I kind of get that, I would have concerns on that, so I don't know what, like, I don't know anything about brewing beer, but what do you do with, that's probably even the right terminology, but the spoils, and you put those out?
So, as far as the smell, the smell, I mean, the only time we would really produce any type of scent would be during brewing, and I mean, you're just talking about sugar water, that's kind of what it smells like.
Yeah, I wouldn't think that, you know, brewing beer, it's the.
The disposal, uh, typically, we can either, I mean, usually it goes into covered bins, first of all, so that it holds smell, and we try to get, I mean, especially the grain, try to get rid of it as fast as possible. Um, a lot of breweries sell it, or not sell it, but give it away to farms, we use it as feed, same with, uh.
You might give it to the.
Go for it. Sell them some beer, give them some spent grain, um, but, uh, yeah, usually that's where the, the spent grain will go to farm, it's, you know, it's used as feed for animals, uh, same with, uh, yeast, which actually doesn't produce any smell, but it's just something we, we probably want to keep out of the water system as much as we can. Uh, we, we have met with the water company, by the way, we met with them the day after Christmas to discuss the water needs, and it sounds like everything's good there. Um, but yeah, like, it would, it's not anything we're going to let fester, uh, you get rid of it pretty quick, and if you, if it has to sit, it'll be in covered bins, uh, it may even still be kept in the facility until we can find something to do with it or put it out of solid waste.
And I, I just have one concern on the, that, that drawing that you put in there is not what it's going to look like, right?
It's, it's a, it's a concept, it's the first concept, can, can we ask what?
I, I, it, it, oh.
It's not, it's not very detailed.
It looks like a quantity, it looks like, like those Lincoln Logs.
It's not very detailed either, so there's none of the windows or doors that are on the actual sides are actually shown or anything. We've got some elevation drawings that actually shows them, but we got them a little bit late to include, to include in our packet. They kind of showed some more of the detail design on it, but, you know, we're, we're going to do a lot of that. Yeah, there's more back and forth.
Well, we do have some rules and regulations, and I didn't think that complied, so.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Am I a summary on the front?
It literally, no, it had some Lincoln Logs.
I'm just curious, I don't think there's anything bearing on this conversation today, but the health department, do they have a multitude of rules and regulations, I guess, on a, not really, still anything like that?
Yeah, there's, I mean, we might have to ask around for Galveston County, but as far as we've heard, they haven't really said anything, especially if you're not serving food.
Thank you.
That was curiosity.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So you'll have another reading before it's done. Item eighteen, consideration possible action concerning request for final plat approval for four point one seven acre residential development, a subdivision of four point one six six seven acres out of lot one oh five of addition D to the town of Dickinson, city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, on property zone, conventional residential, consisting of fifteen lots, one reserve, two blocks in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas. Will it be approved? Motion by councilman Henderson to approve. Second by councilman Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, consideration possible action concerning request for final plat approval for the Bio Lake subdivision, section four, a subdivision of twenty-seven point two acres out of the Perry and Austin Upper League, A dash nineteen, city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas, on property zone, conventional residential, consisting of ninety-five lots, five blocks, and thirteen reserves in the city of Dickinson, Galveston County, Texas.
Will it be approved?
Second by councilman Wilson to approve. Second by councilman King. Any discussion?
I've got a question.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes. One of these, one of the lots before this, I'll just, excuse me, these requests before this, did it have pits attached to it?
So, yeah, all the other, all the other sections do have pits, but I don't know the parameters of the land that was included in the pit. Something you do know? Yeah, so we, we'd have to look, this land might have been included, but just not fully platted out or anything. I, I don't know where that's at at this point, so we'd have to look into that more. But yes, you are correct that the other sections do have pits attached to them. They came at, they didn't come at the same time as the plat, though, so, so it could come after, if that's the way, I've had that discussion with the developer, but...
Well, I'm not sure what, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what section currently exists out there. I know probably section one that does have a pit. But it, you know, they took the dirt that they, they pulled out, they, I haven't been out there in a while, but...
Sure.
They, they built up a mountain between the pit and the bio.
Yes.
And so, you know, I'm concerned, I mean, for one thing, to me, that bio property would be valuable, but apparently not. But it does block the view, so.
So originally, and I, I can only speak to the discussion that was had at the Plan Zoning Commission, and councilman Henderson can back me up with what, here or there as well?
Not likely.
Okay. Fair enough. You know, they, they had considered in their original master land plan to do lots along the bayou frontage, on the other side of that pond. There's also proposed pond, basically to extend, so the pond would extend from the existing street going all the way to cemetery as well. But behind that, you know, on the bayou frontage, there were proposed lots. At this point, it's really not feasible and practical that they want to put those lots there for floodplain concerns and other reasons. He, you know, he, he touched on some drainage concerns and making sure that these lots are, you know, they, they already sit a lot higher out there in Bio Lakes, but he wanted to make sure that they didn't have any additional flooding, they only had a few during Harvey flood. You know, I don't know what the intention is. It may be to move some of that dirt onto these lots to, to raise the level. Um, I... No.
Well, my, my concern is, is, you know, several fold, but one of the things is, is that the, I'll call it a hill.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a significant, it's not stabilized, and, you know, we're concerned about silken runoff into the bio.
Sure.
And he ought to be worried about silken runoff into the detention pond as well.
Agreed.
You know, really, they ought to get rid of it.
Yeah, again, it may be that the dirt was going to be used to raise these lots, so they may be moving it over eventually. You know, that's a discussion I can definitely have, and make sure that we're addressing that to, to ensure that we're not adding any additional, you know, dirt into the, and silt into the bayou, so.
Well, is the city's position, meaning your department?
Sure.
That what they've got out there now with that hill is a problem?
It can cause a problem. I don't, I can't say for a fact that it is already causing a problem, but it could cause a problem.
Yeah, I haven't been out there to look, see if there's any erosion from, from Harvey.
Exactly. I mean, I can't tell.
If it's stabilized, I would...
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to tell for sure without going out, obviously, and I have not done that. I don't believe that anybody from my department has.
But you're saying on this project, that's going to be the topic of discussion?
Yes.
Well, I've been up and down the bio in that area quite a bit, on the bio, in my boat, looking in that area. I see the hill and everything, but it has a lot of vegetation growing on it.
Sure.
So you'd call that a method of stabilization, well, not perfect, I know, but it's a lot better than raw.
Well, it started out raw.
Yeah, but I was saying, it's, it's well overgrown now.
Yeah, it's what they excavated from the...
What's the term?
The vegetation or the?
The vegetation's not intentional. Well, I mean, it's wildlife based at that point.
Okay.
I've got a question. Is that, is the hill they're talking about, is that accumulation of dirt that was taken from the other development? Is it?
So as, when section three, which is what the homes back up to that pond, the existing pond, in order to accommodate, there was an original drainage plan that was submitted, obviously, for the full-scale, a hundred percent developed property from what's there now all the way to cemetery. So they have been digging out that pond, and that's where that dirt is from. So the pond got bigger after section three, or deeper after section three. Eventually, the minor sanding, unless it's changed, is that it will be a full wet pond to be basically an amenity to the subdivision, but at this point, obviously, it's, it's a tri-pond and for detention purposes.
Yeah, well, because I've been out there, but I was out there, I think, I think we'll say phase one, and it seemed to me like there's a, there's a system of berms on part of that development, on the roadside of that. I just wondered how much of that, I wonder how much of that dirt, there's two things that could have happened here, is one, I can say, hey, it was they that just stockpiled it because, get it all done, then sell it or haul it off, or they had something, but you'll find out with that, with the use of that, that dirt.
Yeah, and I, I can't confirm what, but I knew, you know, what the purpose of it is, but I do know where it's from, which is that pond, and, and we will definitely address it with them and try to figure out what's going on and get that. Either if they don't move forward with bayou lots, it's still to have that side of the pond as an amenity and things like that, you don't want just a huge amount of dirt there.
Like I say, if a developer might move forward, well, we leave it at bayous. That's, that's a little weird.
Well, what's, what's the berm, what's the berm or hill or mountain or whatever you want to call it, part of their drainage plan? I, I can't see how it would be.
No, I don't, I don't believe it was.
It appears to me that all they're trying to do is save the cost of hauling it off, but it, I'm not sure that it, it matches the original drainage plan.
I, I don't believe it.
If it is blocking water from, you know, from the bio.
I agree with you.